Welcome everyone to the Merrimack School District SAU 26 School Board Meeting for April 3rd, 2023. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. We want to invite anyone who would like to participate in public participation to come to the mic. If you will state your name and your address for the record, if you're a student, you just need to state your name and not your address. So I want to open the floor up to anyone who'd like to make public comment. It's unusual to have so many folks here tonight and the public comment be quiet, so. But we want to welcome you all. It's great to see all of your faces here tonight. We are going to start tonight with recognition, so I would like to welcome up the Honorable Rosemary Run.
There we go. Thank you very much. I'm so happy to be here and I'm very happy. I'd like to be joined by my colleagues, Representative Bill Boyd, Representative Tim McGee, and Representative Nancy Murphy, and Senator Shannon Chanley is here. We are just so proud of Merrimack and especially when we receive such state recognition as we've done with the girls wrestling. And not only did Emily Angelo Jr. at Merrimack High School win the championship for Merrimack High School, but she's the first champion of girls wrestling in the state. And I would like to present, on behalf of our delegation, I'm happy to present, I'd like to call her up, and also Avery Berard Nelly, who's also here. She came in third in the states. And there were two other girls that wrestle for Merrimack, Leeny Hatted and Kalia Uwaji. So I don't know, I don't think the last two are here, but I'd like to present Emily with a declaration from the Speaker of the New Hampshire House, Sherman Packard.
And if I can ask my colleagues to join me while I read the proclamation. It's House of Representatives a declaration in recognition of Emily Angelo. Whereas Emily Angelo competed for Merrimack High School in New Hampshire's first girls wrestling meet of champions, and whereas she won that tournament for her weight class, becoming the first female state wrestling champion for Merrimack High School and in New Hampshire, and whereas while focusing her time and energy on school, Emily, who is in her junior year, also took time to perfect her wrestling career and earned this extraordinary win. Whereas Emily's win represents the very best in high school sports and exemplifies the success of the girls wrestling program in Merrimack and across the state. And declared, the House of Representatives does give its highest accolades and plaudits to Emily Angelo for her historic win for Merrimack High School. And be it further declared, by virtue of my signature inscribed below, the House of Representatives also gives its highest regard and appreciation to Emily Angelo for being dedicated to her craft from a very young age. She is an inspiration to all New Hampshire athletes and embodies what it means to have a passion along with the dedication and drive to accomplish one's goals. Signed Sherman A. Packard, Speaker of the House.
Don't go away yet. I'm very happy to introduce Senator Shannon Chanley. Shannon?
Thank you, Representative, and congratulations Emily. And on behalf, I too have a resolution, I will. The New Hampshire Senate, a resolution, be it known that the New Hampshire Senate extends its congratulations to Emily Angelo in recognition of being the winner of her weight class in the meet of champions and therefore becoming the first female wrestling champion in the state of New Hampshire. And be it further known that the New Hampshire Senate extends its best wishes for continued success. Thank you so much for your work.
I also want to thank and acknowledge Emily's teammates and also her coach. You can't have a team without a great coach. Thank you very much.
And it is our great pleasure tonight to honor some other stellar athletes from Merrimack. We will start with gymnastics. I want to invite Mia LeBlanc, the NHIAA Gymnastics All Around State Championship, to come forward. And the gymnastic coaches, Noah Labib and Ayem Agub. For boys wrestling, we want to welcome Brendan Curly, NHIAA Division II Wrestling Championship. And along with Brendan, we would ask that the boys wrestling coaches of Brian Dine, Brett Wilson, Zach Hicks, and Eric Thore also come forward. And lastly, we would like to recognize for swim, Josie Stevens, NHIAA Division I 200-yard individual medley championship, and Sarah Conquest, NHIAA Division I 100-yard fly championship. And we invite their coaches, Tim Thompson and Becky Stevens, to join them. Great job to all of our awesome athletes, once again representing Merrimack and making us proud. We're so glad that you are here tonight and we would love to continue to congratulate you. Moving on with our board meeting tonight, we will move on to informational updates. I will turn it over to the superintendent update.
Yes, well, as I said at the last meeting, I know you'd all like to stay for the entire meeting.
The fun is just beginning.
All right, thank you Lori, and could there be a better way to begin a meeting? First of all, I want to wish those who in the community and our staff and students who celebrate Passover, beginning this Wednesday evening, happy Passover, and certainly those who celebrate Easter, a very happy Easter. You know, at the beginning of the year, I was asking for some positive news from the staff, for student and staff news, and I probably got two or three. I think I've got about 12 as of right now. So the momentum is building among the staff to let people know about the great things that are happening in the school district. So if you'll bear with me for a minute, from Melanie Headland and Trevor Knight, they have begun the in-person, once again mentor-mentee program with the high school students, with our elementary students. The mentors meet once a week with the students, with their mentees, for about a half an hour to create a positive, healthy peer-to-peer relationship, playing games, drawing, talking, just talking about school, talking about life, talking about happy things in life. And so we want to congratulate them, Melanie and Trevor, for that program. And congratulations to the high school students for being wonderful mentors. Beth Powers, one of the high school teachers, has informed us that the Merrimack High School Activism and Civic Engagement Club, as of right now, is holding a candidate's form across the way here. And so we congratulate them for doing their civic responsibility in allowing the candidates to express their opinions. From Mike Susi, the New Hampshire Interscholastic Athletic Association and the New Hampshire Athletic Directors Association, Scholar-Athlete Awards Ceremony was held at the Capital Center for the Arts in Concord. The following seniors received a varsity letter in at least two sports, which is quite an accomplishment, and are continuing their sports in their senior year and have a B-plus or better grade point average. So congratulations to them. That's Kayla Scully, Trent Jackson, Matthew Locata, Emily Weinfield, Jackson Forbes, Riley Sylvester, Lily Marshall, Maxwell Townsend, Heather Hadad, Tyler Sastrum, Callie Dillon, Romello Hyde, Nathan Borgard, Amelia Pinkerton, Tyler Bernard, and Michael Morn. We congratulate all of them for a job well done. And Leah Johnson at the middle school, the enthusiasm from staff to work in the summer programs is growing. We have about 100 students now who will be participating in the summer school program, and a number of staff within about the first 30 minutes of asking for people who might be interested in working with students in the summer school. They had a full participation by the staff. So great to hear that, because we not only want to work with our students during the school year, but certainly offer opportunities for growth and development during the summer also. From Fern, Fern Ziden, Director of Student Wellness, we're recognizing mental health awareness in May with the theme "Mental Health in the Digital Age." We're having a community book read of Screenwise by Davor Heitner. We can offer the first 30 people who are interested, excuse me, a free book. You can sign up on the district website on the wellness newsletter component of the website. From Julie DeLuca, I want to thank, wants to thank the parent council at the TFS for having the third and fourth graders go through a very, very interesting program with Marek Bennett, who is a cartoonist, educator, musician, who lives in New Hampshire. They had a wonderful program that was presented to them. And I also want to remember that this is National Assistant Principals Week. So I'm not sure if they have a National Assistant Superintendent's Week, but we'll have to.
Pretty sure that's every week.
But we want to thank our terrific assistant principals during this very special week. From Heather Barker, want to remind parents of the Bright Futures Survey that is currently being conducted. You can check our website for a link there. The survey is open through April 29th. This is a survey trying to collect information and actionable feedback regarding learning models, school climate, and family and community engagement, and a number of other topics. And so once again, that's the Bright Futures Survey. We'll have a link on our webpage to that. And thank you to Heather for letting us know that. From Sarah Campbell, last week, the Granite State Challenge Team from Merrimack defeated Sahigan High School in the quarterfinals with a score of 520 to 210. Their performance sends them onto the semifinals for the sixth year in a row, where they will face the winner of this week's match between St. Thomas Aquinas and Hopkinton on April 27th. From Rebecca Spots, says our college and career fair is this Thursday, and it is the largest one ever with 100 representatives. That is extraordinary. From industry, the trades, and the military, as well as two and four-year colleges. And so I'm going to head over that, check that out, because that is very exciting. Probably some great opportunities for students to be exposed to different careers and colleges and universities. And congratulations to them. From Amy Piccolo, the New Hampshire Scholastic Arts celebrates New Hampshire's creative teens with awards, exhibitions, and scholarships. Through their visual art, teens are developing a voice, sharing their vision, and creating amazing artwork. This year, 42 work photographs and wood pieces were submitted to the New Hampshire Scholastic Art Competition. 26 pieces were accepted into the juried exhibition at Pinkerton Academy in February. Six of these pieces were awarded New Hampshire Gold Keys. Jordan Zeber received a New Hampshire Scholastic Gold Key Award at the state level and was advanced to the National Scholastic Art Competition. Who has been awarded a National Scholastic Silver Key Award. So Jordan, congratulations for outstanding accomplishment. This is always a favorite. The Merrimack High School Student Council is getting ready for Spring Spirit Week. That will be, that will end on Friday, April 14th, with a pep rally and the last whole school dance of the year. The themes of the different classes, seniors is Tropical Friday, juniors, Welcome to the Jungle, sophomores Disco Fever, and I think somewhere in a closet at home. I probably still have a disco outfit. And the freshman Jersey Day. And so I'm going to visit them on that week also, because it's always great walking through the high school when they have a spirit week. So, and they have a dance once again coming up on the 14th with DJ Justin Mellon. So you can feel it building. Great things happening with great students, great faculty, and we're very proud of everyone. And that is it.
Any comments from the board?
I think we should have a spirit board meeting. We should do decade day.
All right, we'll move on to the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update.
I will say, Bill, if you bring the disco, I'm sure I have a Guns N' Roses Welcome to the Jungle tee-shirt, so I can represent the junior class. Yeah, maybe even a slash hat. All right, so I also wanted to mention the 603 Bright Futures Survey. It is on the district webpage. Please, community members, teachers, family members, please take a minute to fill out the survey. If you're a community member, there's also an avenue for you to give your feedback about the district. Thursday, I will miss the college fair, because the Human Resource Director, Melissa Fazek, and I are going to a job fair at SNHU. Hopefully, we'll be recruiting the next best and brightest to come to Merrimack. So we'll wear some gear. I was going to thank Mike Susi. He donated some things for Melissa and I to wear. So we'll be there trying to recruit folks to apply to our positions. I did want to provide a quick update on, from the Department of Education, we were selected for two audits this spring. The first was in-person for our access testing. James Mastercola Elementary School was selected by just random, so they say. But we were selected to have an in-person audit. So late, late February, Kristen Crawford, who is the assessment administrator for the DOE, and Wendy Perrin, who is the Title III and ESOL education consultant for the state, were onsite at Mastercola and went through our practices and protocols as we prepare for access testing. And you may know that that is the testing that is given to English language learners every year to monitor their progress of acquiring and being able to use English as their primary language. We're waiting for the feedback from those two consultants, but we really feel like the meeting went well. I want to take a minute to thank Principal Michelle Romaine and ESOL teacher Marina Garova, who did an extensive amount of preparation for that onsite visit. The second audit that we were selected for was a desktop audit, which is done remotely, and that is for Title I and Title II-A. If you know anything about grants, there is a lot of paperwork that goes into using those funds, documenting those funds. And so we have gone through the process over the last few weeks of uploading and sharing all of that information. And again, await the feedback from the state. Do want to thank our Title I project managers, former JMU's principal, Marsha McGill. I don't know if you know, she has stayed on in that capacity to help out the district. So she's been managing our Title I grant with some help from Jane Revanell. And then my administrative assistant, Linay Foran, she has uploaded all of the Title II information. So just to keep you updated, as we go through the process of making sure that we're following all of the rules and expectations put forth by both the assessment protocols and the state grant system.
Any comments from the board? All right, thank you. We will move on to the Assistant Superintendent for Business Update.
Thank you very much. As you know, the much anticipated, highly just sought-after Voters Guide is probably in the mail and has gone to everybody's home in the district. Been doing that for quite a number of years. I think it's kind of a valuable resource. We try and write it in nice plain language so everybody can understand it. Because if you're reading the warrant articles and you're looking at all the legalese, I mean, I've been doing this for a very long time, so I know what they're saying, but they can get really confusing. So that's in the mail and that's out to everybody. It's also published on the website. Another thing, when talking about the potential warrant articles and the vote coming up April 11th, I believe it is, we received the bids for the James Mastercola Upper Elementary School roof. And we are within budget that was put in the warrant article. And we're going to throw a couple little areas that we wanted to do, but wasn't sure if we could have afforded it because of the cost of the bid. And this isn't, this is the lowest bid, but this is a quality contractor who was in New Hampshire for a number of years, and they're based in like North Carolina, and they want to get back up here. So they want our book of business in their portfolio. So they did a tremendous job for us before, and I'm looking forward to working with them again, if indeed this article does pass. So that's the good news from me. I don't have any Guns N' Roses gear or anything like that, but I think I have a copy of Alice, a replica of Alice Cooper's Snake that he had, so I could bring that. Huh? Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Any comments from the board? All right, we'll move on to the School Board update. So this week, I had the pleasure to meet Harley Hall, and I just want to tell the board, I know some board members already met him, but we hired the right person for the job. He's a visionary. He's kind and caring, and he's really hit the ground running. He's so passionate about this work, and he's visited many school sites to try to take in the best to create a vision for Merrimack. And starting on Wednesday, we will start writing that grant for the DOE to try to get money so we can pay for teachers. And that's one of the things that the board really wanted to do, so we're excited. We're hoping that we will get the money. The next thing is, you know, as far as our goals, the school board goals, when we met this summer, I think we're just really fortunate that we've stayed very focused, and the administration has really met almost every single, I mean, it's April, and we've already met most of our goals or everything's in progress. That's, there was a lot that we put on their plates, and I'm just very pleased with the work that we're doing and the amount of vision and, you know, the dedication. And finally, this, I will be sending out to the board, it's that time of year where we are going to be, you know, doing our evaluation on the superintendent or chief. And so I'll send out a survey to get your input, and then I will write something and I'll give it back to you. And then we can look at it to make sure that it's perfect. Any other comments? All right, and our student representative, Caitlin Badney, is excused tonight. So we will move on to old business. Do we have any old business? Then we can move on to new business. We are going to start with our summer program offerings.
I'm excited to provide you with an update of some of the summer programming that is coming together right now. The majority of our programming will be offered between July 10th and August 11th this year, and we have confirmed the following program so far. We will have a robust offering of extended school year programs for those students identified with IEPs through the Office of Student Services, and that covers all students in kindergarten through grade 12. We will be offering credit recovery and high set tutoring at Merrimack High School, as well as our 8.5 program for rising freshmen. And those of you that have been here know that that's really a program focused on helping students transition from being eighth graders to freshmen. Our summer learning program for students in grades K through four will be hosted at Thornton's Ferry School this summer. Fern Ziden from the Office of Student Wellness, she will be organizing our Mindful Moves and Summer SOAR programming. And Camp Invention will also return once again this summer. Under Kathy Goodman is going to head that up again this summer. Other programs that are in the works, you heard Bill talk earlier. Leah Johnson at the middle school approached me about providing some kind of programming for our students in grades K through seven, I'm sorry, five through seven. And we've noticed that there is a bit of a gap there in what we offer those students. So we'll be working to coordinate something. Was really pleased with the response from teachers who are willing to give up some of their summertime to provide programming and extra help for students academically throughout the summer months. And then finally, Bill and I have been in talks with Bunny, Saranita, to bring back band camp at Merrimack High School. So we're really excited about that. Definitely not as excited as Bunny, but we are, you know, already have a fantastic band, as you know. So really excited to provide additional opportunities for that group to get together. And I'll continue to provide you with updates as new programs are added to our list.
Could I give you a little bit of information about the band camp? Because, you know, in our conversation with Bunny, one of the things she said was many years ago. They had band camp, but then for a number of years, it was not approved. And I don't know a high school that doesn't have a summer band camp, quite honestly. So what she's looking to do is Wednesday evening, have what she refers to as Band Builder. Band rehearsals over the kids entering grades nine through 12. Weekly band masterclass on special topics and band airflow exercises, tone quality builders, tuning strategies, and balance and blend rhythm studies, band music rehearsal. That'll be from 6:30 to 8 o'clock at night on Wednesdays. Then the summer instrument lessons, supports, and extensions, weekly small group. Individual lessons offered grades five through 12 to meet individual skill levels. Scheduled for two mornings and an afternoon per week, Tuesday, Wednesday, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And one to five, and a possible addition will be a music leadership academy. So a person who loves to take initiative, who has great spirit, great energy, holding a terrific event for students during the summer.
So I just, quick comment, and I apologize for how nerdy this is about to get. So I obviously am, I love the idea of band camp. Just to clarify for folks watching at home, there's Band Camp, which is the week before school starts that everyone prepares for the marching season. And this is not that. This would be a separate time period in July. That would be more focused, be like a program during the day. So just to clarify the confusion of the two names, there's one Band Camp, there's another Band Camp. So that's how nerdy I get with that stuff. There you go.
Band Summer Camp.
I'm sure she'll call it something creative and cool, but.
All right, and now we will move on to the Competencies Update. I just wanted to provide the board and the community with an update on our competency work over the past few months.
Over the past few months, we have been in conversation and collaboration with members of the New Hampshire Learning Initiative to bring some consultation and coaching to our district. As I had mentioned in a previous meeting, we are going to start by primarily focusing at the high school. And just this week, we've really fleshed out what the scope of that work will look like. We are going to start with some high quality professional development on professional learning communities. If those of you are familiar with the due for work, we have some iteration of professional learning teams, K to six. But at the middle and high school, we really haven't focused and done with this group of folks, a high quality training on how to run a PLC, what are the four questions of a PLC. And one of our lead consultants from the New Hampshire Learning Initiative is Brian Stack. He's a published author and also a Solution Tree Fellow who can facilitate that work. So we are going to be starting with PLCs this spring into the early days of the school year. And I just wanted to outline some of the, the teams that will be working in tandem to bring competency-based learning and assessment to the district. We will have a district leadership team, a school leadership team, and then a teacher leadership team, serving every level of this work. Of course, we want to have a communicated, a coordinated effort to communicate the plan to the community of what competencies, what will, what will continue, what may look a little different, and what they can expect as we move through, through this work over the next couple of years. I'm really excited about this work. We did have an initial meeting with Brian. He met with the high school leadership team, and then he met with the district leadership team. And there's a lot of excitement and curiosity and really feeling like this is the work that we need to do at this time to be able to move the district forward in lots of different ways. If you've worked in places where competency-based learning is the focus, you know that it is a game changer for a lot of students, not just at the high school level, but also in the early days of their education as well. So we're really looking and excited about doing this work and doing it well for our students.
Comments or questions from the board?
I'll just quickly comment. I was really excited to see Brian Stack's name. I've had the pleasure of working with him a couple times in the past and his colleague, John Vander Els, as well on this very subject matter. Super knowledgeable, patient, understanding of how sometimes scary that transition can be from traditional grading to competency-based assessment. And just, he's, he's a great guy to work with. So I'm really glad that we got a chance to have him work for us. He's awesome.
Yeah, John will be part of our team as well. So we're excited about that.
Cool.
All right. And then we're going to move on to the strategic plan update.
Thank you. Last year, as part of the NIESC review, the guidance of the staff, excuse me, high school staff devoted a considerable amount of effort to constructing a vision of a graduate. Kim Yalot, last year, in her role as Assistant Superintendent, and then picked up by Amy, both of them did an outstanding job in working with a committee with a facilitator developing a vision of a learner. And now our next step is to create a three-year strategic plan. Most companies and experts in the area of strategic plan development recommend not going beyond three years because information changes so quickly. You know, years and years ago, decades ago, we used to do a 10-year plan, then we reduced it to a five-year plan. Now a three-year plan is more relevant. Amy and I, over the last, I want to say, three months or so, maybe four months, have interviewed about six different either individuals or companies, seeking some information about their experience and their pricing in terms of acting as a facilitator. We feel it's very important to have someone facilitate this process to keep the momentum going and to keep us focused. Because we're all busy in our daily jobs, we tend to kind of drop things from time to time and say, well, I'll get to this and I'll get to that later. But a facilitator will keep us focused. We have had prices everywhere from six figures down to $5,000. And that's the vendor that we have chosen, the New Hampshire School Board Association, Mark Dolan, who works for the School Board Association, has proposed, and we think it's an extraordinarily low price. He has sent us some work he has done. He is skilled in this process. We're very much looking forward to the strategic planning process. We're going to, we're going to develop a plan in about seven areas, and we may consolidate some of these. We have some further conversation to come. And we want to focus on the areas of teaching and learning. Certainly that is a high, high priority. School finance and resources, technology and infrastructure, facilities and operations, culture and climate, student and staff wellness, and something we'll talk a little bit about tonight, school security. What we'll do is we will develop, within each of these seven categories, we'll develop goals and objectives, action plans to meet those objectives and goals. We will be articulating the person or persons responsible for accomplishing those tasks, the timeline, and we will be indicating how, how we will know that has been accomplished. What does the assessment look like, and what are the outcomes that we're seeking? And in that way, we will know whether we have accomplished it or not. And so it's an ambitious schedule. It is a very important process for us to engage in, to sort of set, continue to set our direction. What we'll do is we will incorporate in that strategic plan, some of the goals and objectives that we have in our upcoming, and we haven't set the date yet, but upcoming goal setting session like we had last year, which I think was one of the most valuable meetings we've, we've had in the last year. It was wonderful. And so I'm glad to answer any questions, but Mark, Mark is experienced in this, in this field. You know, he works in the, with the NHSBA, and I think that's a real benefit for us. And the price, the price is unbeatable. I mean, no one else came anywhere close to that price.
Questions from the board? Comments? So this is very well written, and, you know, it answers what are the essential questions. A lot of the goals are things that we also talked about this summer, and, and we said these are all important to us. So I think this is something that we should fully embrace, and I think it really supports our vision as a board and the administration's vision. Do we need to take a vote?
Well, I think it would always, I think it would be helpful.
Okay.
If you took a vote to enter into a contract with, I think you'll be, actually be entering in with the New Hampshire School Board Association.
So I can make a motion, and I can say, I make a motion that we accept the development of a three-year strategic plan and prepared by Mark Dolan, and we accept the financial responsibility of $5,000. Second by Jenna, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five, zero, zero.
Thank you very much.
And I just want to add one comment to that just for the public. That does include all stakeholders. We've said that from the very beginning of our strategic planning process. Parents, students, teachers, staff, administration, board members, and the community. So you don't have to have a child in the school to be a stakeholder because you are a member of this community.
Yeah, and it's listed right here in, that the target date for the community involvement is October, so.
All right. Moving on to other new business.
Excuse me. Matt and I have worked over the last week or so to put together some notes on school safety, particularly in light of another, another school incident of violence. We'd like the public to have some sort of an idea of what, what this school district has done, and he has done a tremendous job over the last 10, 15, 20 years in helping to keep our schools secure. I'm always impressed with how much Matt knows and what he has done in this, in this school district. And so we wanted to, wanted to put some slides together, and we did, to present to you, but to let the public know. Now, one of the important things about talking about school safeties and school security is we don't talk about everything. We don't bring our flip chart, our crisis planning flip chart in here, because then it becomes a public document. And so there'll be certain things that we'll say tonight, certain things that we know that we are doing or have done that we just won't mention, because we don't want to give those people who might be inclined to do harm to, regrettably, to students and staff any information. So Amy, if you don't mind running that slideshow here, thank you very much. First, I do want to mention to you, we have had a terrific relationship with the police department. Matt and I meet periodically with Brian Levey, the police chief, and we have had very good discussions about what to do, how to do it in terms of school safety. Brian just sent an email late this afternoon, in fact, about looking into, in the not-too-distant future, school resource officers at the elementary level. Having done a survey, he has indicated to us that many school districts in New Hampshire do have SROs at, at all of the schools. As you know, we have one at the high school, we have one at the middle school. So these are some of the things that we have done, and I will give very much of this credit, if not all of it, to, to Matt. We have the locked vestibules and a badge and sign and procedures. And Matt, anytime you want to chip in with anything, we'll tag team this.
Do you mind if I chip in a little earlier than later?
You go right, you go right ahead, right now.
You know, it's, it's not ironic. I'm not sure really what the, what the proper word is for this, but when I first got here in the year 2000, and this was after Columbine, and people were well aware of the devastation and horror that that act committed, there was not one school in this district that had a secure vestibule. Not one. The first one we did is when we built the high school addition in the year 2000. And we put a secure vestibule in there. And then we went down the line, and it took a number of years, and a lot of times, we took a little bit of ridicule for thinking in such a manner, but it was important that we kept pressing on. So now we have a secure entrance at Reed's, we have a secure entrance at Thornton's. It used to be you just walked right into that building. Once you were in that building, you were in the building. Same thing with James Master Cola Upper Elementary School. You know, the main entrance used to be where the triple doors, where the Smith Gym was. And once you walked in that building, you were in that building. You could go wherever you wanted to in J M U's, and you could go all the way to MES. So we moved the offices around, so when you go into vote, that's your secure entrance. Same thing with MES, that's your secure entrance. When we built the middle school, that was, there wasn't even a question at that point in time that we were going to have a, a secure entrance. So these things have really developed over a period of time, and now it's commonplace. In any good school architecture, you're going to find these entrances in there. You may not have one to the movie theater, you may not have one to the town hall, you may not have one to the gas station, but you're darn well going to have one going into a school facility. And so that was one of the most important things we did. We also have received, and I mentioned this before, a $120,000 grant for safety. Not going to say what it is, but it's going to help us in that endeavor. Okay? The police radios at each school, that was something that was done a number of years ago. I'm not sure if it was Paul Stavanger or Mike Milligan or one of the police officers, police chiefs, thought it would be a good idea that each school had a police radio with a red button on it. So if they needed somebody, boom, they would be right there. And this police force, because I have seen a few incidences that we thought were, we thought that they were the real thing, when actually it was, it was a hoax. They're here, and they are here exceedingly quickly. And I remember one episode where after the incident was cleared, the, all the police officers were saying, when the kids were locked down in the high school, you couldn't hear a pin drop. All you could hear was the boots of the officers walking through that building. And that's a testament to their training. We've also offered our, our buildings for training after hours, you know? We have done that in the past. No one knew it, but at 2:00 in the morning, the police department was in our buildings doing training all over the place. It's one of these things where we, we kind of kept it on the down low. And sometimes when we do that, people don't think we're mindful of what we're doing, but we have a lot going on behind the schools. We used to have endless conversations about walkie-talkies. And probably none of you who are here remember those conversations. But I remember Stan Heinrich and I think Ken Coleman once told me, he says, Matt, if I have to get into a debate about walkie-talkies and how many you have and what's your plan and what's your five-year plan for, I'm going to lose my mind. Just get them walkie-talkies and make it happen. So now, most every teacher, and if they don't, we make sure they have them. If they're on the playground with kids, everybody has a walkie-talkie. If they take them someplace, they have a walkie-talkie. They have instant communication with the office at all times. We also have exterior and interior PA systems. We've had those forever, but we had them recently beefed up through the utilization of ESR funds. We had $239,000 towards that endeavor to make sure everything worked and everybody could hear what they could hear. Granted, you're going to have isolated incidents where a PA system or speaker may not work, but we're on it and we're, we're definitely dedicated to make sure everything works 100% of the time. We also have the mass notification system, which I, we call school messenger. You can call it whatever you have, whatever you like, but that was, that was something that we started a number of years ago, you know, for emergency purposes. And we have utilized that several times. The partnership that we have with the bus company is second to none. STA is just amazing in the response time that they will give us if we need to evacuate a school, if we need to have, let's say, kids just outside because of a fire emergency or something like that, and it's raining. They'll come, middle of the day, to put the kids in the bus so they're not standing in the rain. Or we had a transformer explode at Thornton's Ferry a number of years ago. And I'm on the phone with STA, and by the time I got to Thornton's Ferry, there's a big yellow bus right on my backside, waiting to get into that yard. So that is a, a relationship that you build with your partners. We've done it with police, we've done it with highway, we've done it with finance, we've done it with the town, we've done it with everyone, you know? So we really have a comprehensive emergency management system that has been both practiced and reinforced, and we're always looking for the next thing that we can do. And we're in that period right now. What areas of weakness do we think we have? We've identified a few, and we're going to continue to identify those, and we're going to plug those gaps. It's really tough because you, you, you want to draw a line between what's a school and, and what's a prison, right? And you have to maintain that culture of it is a school, you are safe here, but you have all these instances where you put in protective measures where you can. The SROs, when that first started, that first started at the middle school. We had a grant, a 10-year grant, that we went in with Mark Doyle and Debbie Wolfline helped, helped write it years ago, that put the first SRO into the middle school. When, and then we had the SRO, we had Mike Murray here for a number of years. Mike Murray was an invaluable tools in SRO at the high school. Kids would talk to him. That's the important, that's the importance of an SRO in any school, is the relationship that that SRO has with the kids and the comfort factor that kids have in talking to the SRO. That takes away a lot of the unknown, unknowns that are going on in that building, and that is invaluable. So when Bill was talking to me and he says, you know, Brian Leveque is thinking about doing such, please. please, that is absolutely the best thing that could ever happen, if it does indeed happen, and hopefully the funding is there for it. If not, let's, you know, think about finding the funding for that. The surveillance cameras, that's an interesting story. That started out as a petition warrant article by Jody Valencourt years ago. And it started off at the high school. Now we have over 250 surveillance cameras all over this district. Outside, inside, infrared, they can see in the dark. And this one thing, we used to have around, we used to average around $15,000, $20,000 worth of vandalism before these cameras. We've had nothing since, nothing. Because, well, we did have one, a couple of kids try and get in the art room once, and we did find out who they were. So, it's just an amazing odyssey that we have all been on, Bill and Bill Ricker, Amy and her district, before we all kind of came together, that is exceedingly meaningful, and we take it exceedingly seriously. So, I'll let Bill go on. That's my little, my little, you know, kind of speech here to begin things.
Well, over the last year, year and a half also, we had a team of about 12 people in the school district, and we redrafted a new crisis management plan. We collaborated with Bill Vanderstein, all the members of the police force, and he has been extraordinarily helpful to us. We've talked to the chief about it also, and we have that in place, and everyone has a copy of that. As Matt said, and I reiterate, we've had great meetings with the police department. They know that we are interested in school safety, and there is no compromise. We have certain crisis teams in the buildings with various assignments. As Matt said, we have, Bill Vanderstein has been doing some training with our staff. At the elementary level, it has been mostly with the staff, and, you know, to a lesser extent, different, or shall I say, a little different instructions given to students at the elementary level. We focused on teachers, and training the teachers who will work with the students in the event of an emergency. As Matt said, there'll be a training session that the police will be involved with in our buildings coming up in the not-too-distant future. We have talked about evacuation and reunification process. Sometime this summer, we will actually have another simulated evacuation and reunification process, where we will do a simulated movement from one school building to another, and we will talk through with the police department all of the things that we need to do. We need to have attendance lists, we need to have members of a district-wide crisis team responsible for traffic control, for allowing parents in and out in an orderly manner. We want to talk about the documents that parents need to be able to, for us to be able to dismiss their child in a secure manner to them, so we actually are dismissing them to a parent or legal guardian, who is entitled to have them dismissed to. Lots of different issues. We talk about, in our crisis planning, we talk about recovery. What do we do in terms of crisis, crisis counseling? And who do we have come in for that? We talk about things such as, how do we handle the visitation of dignitaries? God forbid should anything ever happen. Memorials, donations of cash, gifts. These are things that you don't want to think of, but I had the benefit about 15, 12 years ago now, with about a half dozen of the superintendents of meeting with the dispatcher, who was with the police department during the Sandy Hook tragedy. And there were a lot of things that they learned, that she was conveying to us. And so we talk about those things. And we've talked about, talked to the police about public safety response time, and they have assured us that, like the law enforcement officials in Nashville, there will be no waiting, there will be no hesitation, because minutes and seconds count. And that gets into the second. I've given you a little bit of information of the importance of public safety, of public safety response time, and that is, research has shown that a little bit less than half of the incidents take a minute or less of violence. Most of them that I've been aware of have been in the two-to-seven-minute range. So I always like to think in terms of, school tragedies have generally occurred within like a five-to-seven-minute timeframe. Interestingly, a little bit over half of them, of the incidents of school violence, violence occurred during morning hours. So just another piece of information for us to keep in our minds in terms of extra vigilance. Some of the research, Amy, if I could have the next slide, please? 24% of school violence events motivated by a desire for attention or recognition. We've heard that before. 27% motivated by suicide or depression. 34% motivated by the attempt to solve an issue with someone. 54% had multiple motives. 61% were motivated by revenge. And 75% of those engaged in school violence acts felt bullied, prosecuted, or threatened by others. I will, if you're interested, I will be glad to make you a copy of the Safe School Initiative Report by the Secret Service. It's an interesting, very interesting report that is instructive in nature. Amy, if I could have the next slide? So, a little bit more of the data. As I said, about 59% of the incidents occurred during the school day. About 63% of those engaged have a history of weapons use. 68% had weapons in their own home or with a relative. 93% of those individuals engaged in school violence engaged in some behavior prior to the attack that caused others to be concerned. 93% of all attackers landed out in advance. And 95% are current students. So what's the importance of this type of data? Well, what we've done is we've distributed to the leadership team to discuss with the staff in the schools what the behavioral warning signs are, because we want to try and make sure that we can be preemptive in nature. How many times have we heard in relation to school violence incidents where there was some hint of something going on? Somebody was obsessed with guns, talking about violence, talking about acts of violence against others, and people didn't do anything, right? So we've reviewed these with the leadership team. We've asked them to review them carefully with the staff, because we want to look for, and this not only applies to students, but could apply to adults also, changes in behavior, in dress, in weight, in appearance, in school grades, in attendance, changes in their families and friends. Has the involvement in their activities diminished? Have they withdrawn to some extent? Changes in their living arrangements? Have they moved out because of some point of contentiousness in the family and the household? Have they exhibited changes in their temperament, in the level of aggressiveness? And sometimes have they engaged in injurious behavior to themselves? All warning signs. Amy, if we can have the next one? Continuation of those warning signs, a reference to weapons becoming increasingly more frequent. Access or ownership to firearms. Fascination with weapons, fascination with violence. Social media presence and messages extraordinarily important. We have to pay attention to those things. Young adults, children, adults are posting. Strong political, ideological, or social rants or rage. Comments to friends or adults about potentially dangerous behavior to self or others. They have difficulty in connecting with others in social isolation. History of violent or aggressive behavior. References to homicide, death, or threats to harm others. And history of discipline, problems, or frequent interactions with enforcement. Continuing along with the warning signs, and we are going to post these on our website also, because these are the signals that have to be paid attention to. That you must, we must be responsible in understanding the connection between these behavioral warning signs and potential acts of school violence. Sometimes, some will display cruelty to animals. That seems to be becoming more frequent than not. As I said, expression of violence in writings or drawings. Hostility toward a student or group of students. A relationship breakup that can be quite distressing to someone. Issues of depression, expressions of helplessness or worthlessness. Intense emotion or lack of emotion. Reference to suicide, that's a key that we really need to always keep our eyes on. An intolerance for differences and prejudicial attitudes, prejudicial attitudes, excuse me. And an individual who's experienced a threat, a trauma, or bullying. A lot of students who have engaged in school violence have been bullied, and that seems to be a common denominator. One of the things we've stressed in the school system also is that it's critical to the school district that we share information as students transition from one grade to the next, and from one school to the next. And so, a little bit more about school violence and connections, correlations to certain occurrences with own-life factors. Oftentimes, we see school violence happening by an individual who is in a family that's separated, the parents are separated or divorced, or great financial difficulty and stress. Having parents or siblings that are arrested or incarcerated. The use of drugs and substance abuse of all types. Sometimes, family domestic violence is involved in shaping the attitudes and the actions of children. A history of family mental health, abuse or neglect, and non-parental custody cases, and, you know, sometimes even foster children sometimes have a difficult time adjusting. So, all of these things, we wanted to give you a little bit of snapshot, of a snapshot into most of the things that we have done, and I credit Matt once again, because this school district has been as responsive and responsible as any that I've ever seen in terms of addressing school safety. We are always working at it. The important thing, these last factors that I want to present to you, we want our staff, we want parents, we want community members to always be observant of what's going on in their neighborhoods, in their families, on social media, with respect to any hints that could present themselves as potential, need to become involved to prevent any type of transgressions. And so, I think it's important, we will put these all up on our website. We're always glad to engage the community in conversation. We will continue the conversation with Chief Levey about SROs in all of our schools, and we won't give up. We will continue every single day, every single week, and every single year to pay attention to school safety. And I'm glad to answer your questions.
Questions and comments?
I have a few. The first one, you know, I like the walkie-talkie thing, but they still have to be charged, and someone has to know where they are. So, if there was any way we could look into having a panic button in every single main office, because if, you know, I know in the Nashville schools, every main office has that, and it's within a minute, you'll have a response, and I think every second's going to count. So I know that's something maybe we could put on the capital improvement plan, but, you know, I would recommend that. Many, many years ago, when I was a teacher at Merrimack High School, there was a student who had a, it was a Civil War class, they were doing, and he brought a gun from the Civil War as a prop, and the school went down to lockdown. And what I will tell you, the SWAT team, and it was the Merrimack SWAT team, they were there within minutes. Everyone was in lockdown, and just the response as a teacher, seeing how quickly the school responded and what they did and handled it, gave me great comfort that we were prepared, we knew what we had to do. And like Matt said, you could have heard a pin drop, everybody was serious, they knew it was real, even though it wasn't real, but, you know, I think it's important. And then, finally, I think that if we could also write and review, if we have a situation where a student presents in a way that is dangerous to other students, that we look for alternative placements, and we have a policy towards that. I have a friend who works as a guidance counselor at a high school, who was recently physically attacked by a student, and was choked, and the student is back at that high school. And so I was like, that would never happen at our school. And it's caused her some post-traumatic stress, you know? So, I just think if we had a really clear policy that parents and everyone understood, I think that would be good.
We have, in fact, we have done that.
Yeah.
I want to add the importance of that communication from school to school. I've seen recently, not in Merrimack, just particularly students moving from middle school to high school. And high school teachers generally take students just as they are. They don't know them, they're clean slates. But when you have a student who has a history of behavior issues and concerns, and exhibiting some of the things that you have mentioned here, I think it's important, in the best interest of the child and the best interest of the school, that there is that confidential communication. Hopefully, there's already been interventions happening, because a student who's exhibiting these things is crying out for help long before an act of violence. And so, I like our interventions here with the parents, with guidance, with outside referrals and those kinds of things. But I do think that that is a key piece that sometimes doesn't happen when they move from school to school.
I just wanted to, sorry, I'm super congested, I think I have allergies, so I sound terrible, but... I just want to say again that this really illustrates why we have such a focus on SEL in our district, because it helps our students build those social and emotional skills, those coping skills, those life skills that reduce these, they help to offset these difficult life events, adverse life events, that's what I'm looking for. For us to build those skills starting really young. And, you know, it's good for all students, but particularly for students that might live in a situation with some of these risk factors listed on this last page. It helps to offset some of those things who have people at school and teaching these skills directly, because not everybody gets those skills taught directly at home. Some even from good families don't, right? So, it's so important for us to be focusing on SEL as a school community and as a community at large. And that is why I'm so proud to be in a district that's, you know, that really values that, sees the importance, and is always looking for that. I want to add my voice to the chorus. I'm so thankful that we're talking about an SRO for the elementary school. I work at an elementary school, we have an SRO shared, I think, with other buildings. But we see her, she's in the buildings, and the kids know her. And she's able to help in difficult situations. When interesting situations pop up, she comes in, she helps the administration deal with those, she provides really good guidance. And it's just so nice to know that when we have any sort of issue, she'll be there, and she'll be there quickly. And so, I'm really thankful that the police department and the school district are working together to see if we can make that possible in the not-too-distant future. So, thank you for all of this, this is fantastic.
Well, may I just make a comment in terms of SEL? You know, we talk about trusted adults. It's important for all our staff to realize, and they do, that they have that potential at any one point in time to be that trusted adult that could help a child, a young adult, make the difference between a right decision and a wrong decision. And so that is extraordinarily important for everyone to realize. And so that is extraordinarily important for everyone to realize that they can make that difference.
And I'll add my two cents. I think the majority of people in this, maybe the majority of the people in this room right now are in schools every day. And so this is something that I know I think about every time I walk into my building and I'm sure a lot of other people do as well. And so this, you know, to know that these plans are in place is comforting and great. And we also know that it'll probably never be enough. You know, there's always somewhere that we can improve and as you have said, seconds matter. This seems like a really good time to ask about next Tuesday, which is voting day. And we're about to open a couple of our buildings up to the public. So have we been in contact with police and the moderators in town about what the plan is for that?
Yeah, the police have a standard routine where they provide coverage in our schools. Beginning next year, we're going to have no school on election days. And so just that extra margin of, of safety. There has not been any issue to this point in time. But in talking with, with Lynn Christensen, when she was the moderator, we decided that in next year's calendar, if you noted last week, last meeting, we approved it on the primary day and on the town election day, there are no, there's no school. So, but they, police have done an excellent job, Ken, in providing coverage and with our staff also.
Yeah, and I, I, looking at the calendar for next year, I love that we're not in school on those days. And so just, just to clarify for folks watching at home, there will be police presence in the buildings on those days. It's very specific areas of the building, they will be allowed into one entrance, one exit type of deal. And so there are plans in place for that, it sounds like.
All right. Well, we want to thank you for providing that safety update and being very timely.
Well, once again, I want to thank Matt because for years he has been focused, among other things, on school safety and he has done an incredible job. So thank you, Matt.
All right, we're going to move on to our policy section of the agenda with the approval of early admission to kindergarten and grade one.
May I just, Lori, may I just note a change to everyone? We noticed in the last couple of days, going stretching back to last week on the early admission, that there seemed to be a sentence missing. And that is after the second paragraph, we needed to add that a child must have attained the age of five by September 30th in order to attend kindergarten in the Merrimack School District. Now, school districts are required to provide at least half day. Parents are not required to send the child, but we need to have, we needed to have some reference to the age benchmark of a kindergarten, so that, that has been added.
All right, and we have this on the agenda for approval tonight and to adopt the revision. So I'll entertain a motion to accept this policy with that revision.
We'll make a motion to accept this policy with that revision.
Moved by Ken, seconded by Lori, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Five zero zero.
Thank you.
All right, approval of service animals.
Is this the final reading of this one?
Yes.
I will make a motion to approve the policy IMG regarding service animals.
Second.
Moved by Ken, seconded by Naomi, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Five zero zero.
Thank you.
And then we are on our final approval of animals in school. Do I have a motion?
I'll do it again. I'll make a motion to accept the policy IMG regarding animals in the school.
Moved by Ken, do I have a second? Seconded by Jenna, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Now we are on to our first reading of non-educational surveys and questionnaires.
And as you can see, lots of red ink suggested by our legal counsel. And it's always, always good when we have a very, very skilled legal counsel to review our policies and update them.
So a question that I have, just the way this is read, and, and I know we have a lot of parents in the district who want to be notified of surveys and those kinds of things. So I'm glad we're doing an update. But I think there's sometimes confusion. Oftentimes teachers will just do a quick like Google form with, you know, what's your favorite candy and what'd you do for the summer? And it's technically a survey, but it's a get to know you kind of thing on the first day of school. Where does that fall within our non-academic, non-educational surveys and questionnaires?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure that that, that this policy would pertain about to that sort of informal informational gathering about the nature of the students. I think what we're referring to here is any type of survey, for example, the, well, I don't know, sometimes I would consider the school calendar to be a non, non-educational survey, but it might be. But something that we would use on a larger scale to bring to you to might affect a change in policy or have a new policy written or a new direction to the school district. And so, you know, asking kids in terms of what kind of candy bars they like or something, I, I don't think we would need to involve this policy.
And I would agree, I just, I think it's good for clarification because I've heard some parents try to lump those in with this as well. And they're totally different kinds of surveys.
And it's, it's all in like awful legalese that's really hard to understand. I must have read this thing like five times and I think I kind of get it now. But it kind of goes over that in here. It's like this, there, there are very specific ones on very specific topics that we will provide authorization for. And it, it tends to be things that are more controversial than, you know, whether you like a Snickers bar or an Almond Joy.
Any other questions or comments by the board on this first reading? All right, we will take that one under advisement for the next reading.
I'm sorry.
Take a motion to waive the first reading.
I'd be happy to make a motion to waive the first reading of policy ILD, the non-educational survey and questionnaire.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Naomi, all those in favor of waiving the first reading? Say aye.
Aye.
Five zero zero. And then the first reading of video surveillance on school property. Any comments or questions on that one?
I have one, oh, you can go first, Lori.
When we get to the third paragraph, I was thinking that maybe we should have the word also where we say disciplinary proceedings, say possible legal action. Because sometimes there might be on camera a situation like in the gym where two parents decide to fight each other from different teams or something. And so there could be possible, we do the cameras before, we're not disciplining them, but we, there could be assault, there could be legal action, so that's what I was thinking.
So you're saying determines that the recording is relevant to a discipline and pre, disciplinary proceeding, possible legal action or court order?
Possible legal action because if it was assaulted, it could be arrest.
Okay.
I have one too. This is kind of like a, it, it feels nitpicky, but at the same time, the, the subheading, video and audio recordings on school buses, we then only talk underneath it about audio recordings on school buses. Do we need to add a line in there about what we do with video on school buses as well? Or take video off and assume that school buses count as the same? Does that make sense?
Well, I, I can kind of speak to this because God, I don't know how many years ago I was involved up in Concord in front of the representatives. Actually, in a law office with Gordon Graham and Kathy Peel banging out the language for the audio on school buses. And it was at the time, it was legal to do audio on school, I mean, video on school buses just as it is in school buildings. So that's why that's in there as audio. The board has to approve it. Most districts, they have audio, in fact, all of them. We're kind of, even though we were on the forefront of creating the law, we were kind of a little bit behind the times as far as adopting it. If you would feel, I don't know about, this is up the bill, this is his bailiwick over here. If you would feel better to have video just to make it complete, that probably something we could discuss with the attorney just to make sure. I'm not sure, Bill.
We can, we can certainly discuss that with them, if, if you so desire.
Matt, I also have a question on that. So when we have something relevant and we don't know where it is on, and so we have to go back and we might listen or, you know, a part that isn't a part of it, but we're, you know, because it just says, you know, only the part that's relevant, but we might not be able to get there. That's all, I just had that in my head, you know, like.
Yeah, you know, there's.
So you're gonna have to go back, so you might hit something else.
There's a period of investigation. And let's say during that period of investigation, where you're trying to get to that exact point in time where the report that I said something to Amy and Amy said something to me, that's what you're focused on. The rest of it, we don't care.
We might have to watch it to get there, or we might have to listen.
You may have to sift through, but whatever is said leading up until that moment that we're investigating, Amy calling, what'd you call me anyway? Anyway, super nice guy. Everything else, we don't, we don't look at, we don't report, we don't, we're blind to it. That was the whole premise behind it. And that was part of the concern of the legislature, that we would hear certain things in our quest to get to that one item. So it's just that one item, everything else is irrelevant.
Okay, I get it, I just.
Yeah.
I, I do agree with Naomi, though I do want to ask about the video thing because I just think of a recent news story where I think video revealed that there was some abuse on behalf of a bus driver towards a, an elementary school student. And the video is what revealed that. And it feels like that paragraph down there really does need to include video and not just audio.
We'll cover that with our legal counsel.
Yeah, perfect, thank you.
Then we'll come back to read it and pass it for public's comment. All right, now we are on to.
Do we have to make a motion to waive the first reading?
Not if we have to talk to the attorney for that language. We'll waive it at the next one, once we get that settled. And I'm, I'm definitely in agreement that we should settle that first. All right, on to the approval of the minutes from March 20th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve the minutes from March 20th, 2023.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Any changes or discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, all those abstained, four zero one. Onto the consent agenda for job description for literary, literacy coordinator.
In your packet tonight is a new job description for your first reading and later review and approval for formerly known as the language arts coordinator at each building. We'll be rebranding that as the literacy coordinator, which is more appropriate for 2023. This job description really covers a lot of what those folks do at each of our buildings. So as I mentioned, this is for your first reading and you can take a vote on it in a future meeting.
Thank you, any questions at this point? All right, we will move on to committee reports.
I have a committee report. I'm finding my notes. I went to the Parks and Rec Committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. The biggest thing kind of on their agenda is they're keeping their eyes on possibly having to relocate the skateboard park when we build our SAU building. And that's kind of tricky, so I'm going to repeat a little bit of the conversation here because as many kind of people thinking about like, where can we find land to do this? And what are the kind of requirements is, is awesome. They, ideally, they want a location that's easy for kids to get to. That's one of the reasons why they like where it is right now on O'Gara Drive. And also easy for the police to patrol or proximity to the police station. The two kind of locations they've thought of so far are, I guess, a field near the middle school, which is easy for younger kids to get to, but a little bit farther afield for, for the police. And then in Wasserman Park, which would be nice from a, from a perspective of the, the Parks and Rec staff is right there. But it's again, kids would need to get a ride there. They can't just like walk there unless they happen to live in that area. So their kind of plea to the community is, hey, everybody, you know, put your thinking caps on and see if you can get creative and, you know, where might there be space? There's, there's all kinds of considerations that I don't remember the details on about like, it has to be town-owned land and what you can and can't get grants for. And if you get grants, the restrictions on use and, but just like, you know, thinking out of the box and, and kind of stuff like that of what some possibilities might be.
Well, the last, if I, if you may, the, the, the last time that that was put there, it was via grant and we gave them a lease and it expired in 2018. And so we've been kind of, that's been kind of the anointed spot for the, for the new central office, which is by the way, it's coming tomorrow, Bill, on a big truck trailer. I'm only kidding, I'm only kidding, please. No emails. But you know, that is a good location for it, but I see the need to move it if we're indeed going to utilize that area for a central office. But, and I understand what they're, what they're going through, but you know, they have to, I don't know if they're going to move it or they're going to build a new.
Definitely build new. There was also a discussion about how that, the equipment was, was old and they would get new.
It's all skate light and everything like that, and so we wouldn't move well.
Yeah.
Okay.
I meant move in a more metaphorical sense than actually moving the physical equipment.
All right, any other committee reports? All right, correspondents?
I just had one parent reached out that, that had some concerns and I just put them through the chain of command.
I had, like probably many of us, concerns about what happened last week and asking follow-up questions, which you guys did a great job covering tonight. Appreciate that. I also had another one, a parent that would like to speak with me about just some questions and thoughts about SEL in the school. And we were supposed to talk last Tuesday and I got pulled into a meeting that went very late. And so we will be talking tomorrow. Any other correspondence? Comments from the board?
Are you sure? All right, I just have a few. Two weeks ago, I, I mentioned this at the last board meeting. I had the pleasure of working at the Large Group Festival up in Bow, New Hampshire, where I got to watch the Merrimack High School Concert Band and Chorus perform. And if you haven't heard already, the Merrimack Concert Band received a perfect rating, which I don't think any other school achieved that day, so that was very impressive. And then this past weekend, I also found myself working at the New Hampshire Allstate Festival where nineteen Merrimack students were representing our town as the top musicians in the state. And they were outstanding representatives and put on an amazing performance. It was a great weekend. And that got me thinking, kind of going back to the beginning of our, our meeting here and, and the well-deserved and appropriate recognitions we give to our amazing athletes. We have students in our Merrimack High Schools who are the best at what they play. They're the top scoring musicians in the state. I know that we have several top scoring, like, and you know, the highest score you can get. I'm just not sure why we don't recognize them the same way we do our athletes, our scholastic art competitors who receive those gold keys. I feel like we talk about equity, we should be bringing those people in here to recognize them. So I, I would like in the future, if possible, all people who achieve greatness, all of our students who achieve greatness should be brought in to be recognized. And I feel like we did a great job tonight and I'd like to see that continue across the board, regardless of what the subject matter is.
Please, so please know that that's, that's on the agenda. It's just that the, we happen to be studying this when the athletes receive their awards, but fine and performing arts students, academic awards, awards of all types. Those students will be here with the staff.
Yes.
Look, go ahead, Jenna.
Mine was just to sort of publicly and to, to those of you that build the agenda, just a couple of things I'd really like to see on future agendas. I think I've already mentioned the CTE program presentation. I would love to see people. people involved in the CTE program come in and give a presentation. I know that as a parent uh, of, I mean, two currently, but three high school students, I really didn't know what was going on, I didn't know the CTE offerings, I didn't know how it worked, I knew nothing. And I would consider myself a pretty highly involved and very informed parent, and I didn't know what was available until I had a student that um, expressed some interest in, then I went and took a tour and I was blown away at what is available to our students, and I don't think a lot of people know, and I think the beginnings of it might be to have us know, like, as a school board member, I didn't know until my own child was interested. And so um, I would love to see a presentation about that, no rush, doesn't have to be next week, next meeting. Um, I'd love to see that, and then the other thing I would like to learn more about um, in, for a future um, meeting, is our dual enrollment, like, what do we have for dual enrollment offerings? What, where do we shine there, where are our gaps, what can we do? I know, um, you know, Nashua Community College is a partner for us in that, and I would love to know more about how they're involved and how we can increase those offerings at Merrimack High School across the board in various different subjects, those are just a couple of things on my mind as a high school parent.
Very, very important items, and thank you for bringing them up. Um, those vocational strands are extraordinarily important. Um, about eight years ago, the Massachusetts Business Alliance for Education did a survey of hundreds of businesses. Sixty-five percent of the respondents said they needed students with more vocational experience. Uh, you know, my only regret over the last thirty years is that local school districts have lost those vocational components, they've gone to a more centralized model. Amy and I last week, we're just at a uh, informational breakfast at Nashua Community College. Thank you to Mackenzie Murphy, who are, uh, on, who is on the um, the budget committee, and she is an admissions uh, assistant director, I believe. Uh, we had a very good meeting there, she's gonna have a follow-up meeting with us to see, and, and we will talk with our guidance staff at the high school in terms of furthering the partnership with uh, colleges, uh, in terms of the dual enrollment program.
Thank you.
And the only thing I was going to add is um, a few meetings ago, we did talk about um, having uh, principals rotate coming in and uh, on their principal reports, having them uh, mention student recognitions too, because there are so many great things doing, you know, that are happening at all schools, elementary schools, someone wins a spelling bee, there's just so much. But if they came and we rotated, they came every four months and then they could go through um, those students and we could recognize all of them, I think that would be great, because um, there's just so, there's just so much that is positive going on right now, and, and to capture all of it, I think is important.
We will do that.
Okay.
And my comment tonight is to remind everyone that the school board and town election is Tuesday, April eleventh, a week from tomorrow, and I just want to say again what I said at the deliberative session. The teacher contract is going to do amazing things to help our teachers for us to recruit and retain the best of the best. And so I really think Merrimack will do the teachers proud. And I want to encourage everyone to come out and vote next Tuesday from seven to seven at three polling locations, you can look on the town website to see where your polling location is located. All right, I want to turn over the meeting for public comments on agenda items. Again, if you'd like to come and talk about agenda items, please state your name and your address, and if you're a student, you do not need to state your address. So opening the floor.
Hi, Rick Flot, one twenty-nine Indian Rock Road. Um, my comment is not really about school, but about skateboard park. Um, I had no idea that it was gonna be, you're planning on doing something else possibly with that land. My count would be, I'd be in favor of you not putting another one back up and tell the people that use it, tough luck, you don't deserve one. Um, I walk by it frequently in the morning, I come in through the backside of it, so I get a bird's eye view of what the place looks like. And the summertime, when it gets used frequently, uh, the people who use it frequently leave their trash there, not just a little bit of trash, quite a bit of trash. I guess they assume public works will clean it for them, or whoever they think is gonna clean it for them, or they're just done with it, so, you know, it's okay to leave it there. Um, it bothers me to no end to see people leaving trash everywhere, a- and the fact that people use the park and don't care enough to pick up their trash after they're done using it, uh, in my mind makes it like, okay, if you don't care, no one else should care either, so we just won't need it anymore, and you can whine about not having one, since you couldn't keep that one clean, what's the point of putting up another one for you to leave your trash behind again for it? So I look at it that way, it's been that way for years, I walk by it frequently in, uh, during the week in the mornings. And weekends too, I walk by it frequently too, so I get a good view of what it's like, and I'll walk by and pick up bottles and cans and drop them in the garbage can too and just shrug, and it's like, yo, I don't understand why the people that go through the trouble putting this here for you, and you don't care enough to keep it clean. So I look at it that way and just say, well, if you don't care, why should anyone else care? That's my comment, thank you.
Any other comments? Well, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ken, seconded by Jenna, all those in favor say aye? Five zero zero, thank you and good night.